Ms. Raccamondo?
Present.
Ms. Borelli?
Present.
Mr. Ochello?
Present.
Ms. Iannello?
Present.
Mr. Laurentino?
Present.
Ms. Roloff?
Ms. Torbic?
Present.
Ms. Traverso?
Present.
Ms. Adorelli?
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Not this one. It's this one. Okay. No. Sorry, guys. Sorry. Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the Bergen Record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Publics Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. Okay. Want to start with a student representative report? Please? Chip, mic.
Yep. There you go. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off with Washington School. Last month, some of the Stalest students here at the high school started their work-based learning in one of the classrooms at Washington. This is in addition to the two students from the Tomorrow's Teachers Program that are already there at the Washington School. The kids are happy to learn a lot through working with these students, and they're happy to be with them as well. This month, the National Honor Society at the high school will be visiting Washington to work with the students on a winter activity. Students are having some winter fun, expressing their creativity through painting snowy scenes with paint and crafting penguins and igloos. These skills are helping with their fine motor skills. And lastly, Washington will have their fifth annual fashion show on February 3rd, and it was a success. Now, moving on to Long School. The winter concert this year went well, showcasing the talents of the 4th, 5th, and 6th grade choir, band, and ORFF students. Performing in the high school auditorium always makes these extra special events for the students. February has been a busy month filled with school-wide activities. This week, Mr. Luca, the Long School counselor, organized Random Acts of Kindness Week with activities for all grade levels designed to spread kindness through LMS. Long celebrated Crossing Guard Appreciation Day with students expressing their gratitude for the safety the crossing guards provide. Students decorate stop signs as a special thank you. This week, Long will also thank Officer Joe, their SLEO, on School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Long School will join the district in wearing purple for PSI Love You Day, a day dedicated to mental health awareness and fostering a supportive community where everyone feels welcome, loved, and supported. In collaboration with the other schools, the 6th graders decorated Starbucks coffee sleeves that Starbucks will give out in celebration of this day. Smith School recently held its most successful duct taped-to-teacher fundraising event at the end of this January. The entire school participated, and Ms. Murphy and Mrs. Laurentino were successfully stuck to a wall. The students' annual winter concert showcased the musical talents of the upper-grade students. The program highlighted the journey of the school's beginning band members as they embark on their instrumental musical education, while also celebrating the progress and skill of the advanced band. The concert also featured the high school choir and a special performance by the select saber-tone group, demonstrating the diverse range of musical talent at Smith School. Last week, Smith proudly celebrated National Counseling Week, recognizing the invaluable contributions of the school counselor, Ms. Cavello. They are incredibly grateful for Ms. Cavello's dedication and support in helping students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Today, Smith marked its 100th day of school, and they want to extend a special thank you to Saddle Brook Crossing Guards for their unwavering commitment to student safety. These dedicated community members brave all types of weather to ensure the safe passage of students to and from school every day. Their dedication is deeply appreciated by the entire Smith School community. Now for Franklin School, who held their Super Bowl food drive sponsored by the Student Council. The collection was a success and surpassed last year's total. The winter concert at Franklin School was a wonderful event, and they thank everyone who attended and supported the music program. This month, Franklin celebrates and wants to acknowledge Ms. Abate and all she does for the students, staff, and families during the National School Counseling Week. They also held a Reading Buddies event, inviting students from upper grades to read along with the younger peers during school hours. The students greatly enjoyed having an opportunity to come together to read. This month, the middle school started their Cycle 3 classes on January 27th. They are halfway through the school year. The week of February 3rd was National School Counselors Week. The middle school wants to say a big thank you to Mr. Backs for all of his hard work, compassion, and commitment that he puts into his job each and every day to help the students. On February 4th, they inducted the newest members into the National Junior Honor Society. These students work extremely hard throughout the year. Their dedication, commitment, and hard work really shines through. Everyone is so proud of each and every one of them. And a special thank you to Ms. Josephson and Ms. Sharp for putting the ceremony together and working with the students. The middle school watched the Harlem Magic Masters engage in an assembly about respect. The students really enjoyed themselves. Some of the students and staff got to participate onstage with the basketballers. It was a great way to start off the day. Middle School celebrated National Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. They made cards to say thank you to the crossing guards for keeping everyone safe. Now for the high school. The counselors have begun their one-on-one conferences with the high school students to create their schedules for the upcoming school year. While doing this, the high school commended the whole counseling department for their hard work and devotion to their students for National School Counseling Week. Students participated in the SEALA by-Literary exam on February 3rd. There was a great turnout, with many students confident in their abilities in other languages. The media center was full of dedicated and hard-working students that took the exam. If you haven't already looked, students who took the exam, your results are in your emails. This past week, the high school clubs took their yearbook photos. A big thank you to Mr. Klein and the photographer. This Thursday is PSI Love You Day throughout the district, and students are encouraged to participate by wearing the color purple to school. The high school also commends all crossing guards for National Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. And lastly, information regarding the sports. Congratulations to the competition cheer team on winning the second consecutive year the NJIC Comp Cheer Championship. Next up for the girls is the state tournament. Good luck, and thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Violetti?
Thank you, Savannah. Okay. I'm going to go through some quick updates, and then we are going to do the exemplary Falcons. We are going to have the VFW is present to give away some awards. And then we have a presentation on mid-year district and board goal updates, strategic planning updates, and referendum updates. So just so that everyone's aware of the flow. I just want to comment Savannah mentioned Washington School's fashion show. I forget how many years they've been doing it. It's only been a handful, but to say it was a success is an understatement. These kids strutted down the red carpet. It's the culmination of their clothing unit. So they're learning about different patterns of clothing, different styles of clothing, and they dress up for this fashion show, and they walk down the red carpet to music. They pose in front of the stage. They blow out kisses, and then they come back. So it really was a fun event to go to. And if you didn't catch from Savannah's updates, PSI Love You Day is tomorrow. Everyone's encouraged to wear purple. It was started by a Saddle Brook family for mental health awareness and suicide awareness, and Starbucks was very kind in giving our students those cup holders to decorate. So if you go to Starbucks tomorrow, chances are, in Saddle Brook, chances are you will get one of those cup holders with their coffees. I want to thank the Women's Club in town. They did donate $15, $20 gift cards for families in need. I want to thank Acme as well. They once again donated gift cards. I believe something to the effect of maybe $3,000 worth of gift cards. Extremely generous. We will be using them at our parent partnership night, which is going to be Tuesday, March 18th. We're going to host a college fair that night, so our high school students are invited to attend with their parents. One gym will, the plan is for one gym to be the college fair and the other gym to be a career night. So I did send out a Google forum for community members to sign up to have a table in the other gym and share their career path with our students, so that way our students can see some different options out there. For our younger families, we are going to do a kindergarten readiness session. We are NJ4S, which I will talk about later, but they are also going to do a session for our families on handling stress. Community Partnership in Town, they're going to participate as well. Our Service Learning Club will be having pizza, Pom Tony will have refreshments, Alphabet will be supplying childcare, CPAG will have a table for special education parents, and Spencer Bank is going to host a session on financial planning for after high school because it is never too early to start planning ahead. So all of that's going to be on parent partnership night. I also want to share that we had 11 middle school singers that successfully auditioned for the 2025 All-North Jersey Intermediate Junior Region 1 Chorus. Almost 400 middle school singers from the seven counties of northern New Jersey auditioned at Wayne Hills High School this past Saturday, and we had 11 of our middle school singers that were chosen. So congratulations to them. I want to remind everybody that February 24th is the deadline for the Healthy School Lunch Challenge. I will share out the details tomorrow with my district update or Friday, but there are some great prizes there. I believe for the high school, there's some cash prizes as well, so you may want to look into that. The communication survey that was shared out by the district, I'm very happy to say that we had 95 respondents. We had a good number and some really great feedback. So me and my team, we're going through that feedback. We're kind of discussing ways that we can improve as a district. But I want to take a moment to thank everybody. For the board, generally speaking, it was extremely positive and just some, you know, some little things that we can improve on. So we were really excited for that. Okay. At this time, I'm going to move, transition to honoring our exemplary Falcons that are here this evening. So, hold on. Give it a second. Okay, thank you. Our first exemplary Falcon, what I'm going to do is I will share who I'm going to be speaking about, and then I'm going to share what staff members across the district have written about our Falcon. So our first one I'm going to talk about tonight is Michael Marin. "Michael is one of the most thoughtful and sweetest students I have ever taught. He is polite to teachers and classmates alike, and genuinely cares about what they are saying when he's having a conversation. He works hard in class. He asks questions to improve himself when he makes an error or doesn't understand something, and he's a great person overall. Michael is very respectful while participating in culinary club activities. He's enthusiastic about the various recipes we have during the club meetings. He hands out the ingredients to the other groups, is extremely helpful, and when he needs something, he advocates for himself. I had the pleasure of teaching Michael in grammar school. He was the kindest young man who would work so hard to find success. We would have walking challenges during recess to pass the time, and we would always find ourselves laughing every time. Michael was also the first student every day to ask how my day was going, and with a smile. Michael was always interested in our class discussions and insightful in responding to open-ended questions. His kindness was seen daily in all interactions with both teachers and peers. So, Michael, congratulations on being an exemplary Falcon, and come on down to get your special shirt." All right. Next is Natalia Jarecki. Natalia is such a kind and hard-working student. She genuinely cares about other people and is extremely selfless in her interactions with classmates. Not a day goes by that Natalia does not give her best effort. She has a positive influence on every class that she is in through her insight, work ethic, and positive energy. Natalia is a founder and vice president of the Polish club at the high school. As such, she is very involved in club activities and administration of the memberships. She's a delightful person and always a great friend to all. Natalia is a standout student that's also a writer for the high school newspaper. She brings insight and eloquence to every piece she crafts. Beyond journalism, she excels across a wide range of subjects, demonstrating a rare combination of intellect, adaptability, and perseverance. She embraces challenges with confidence, balancing rigorous coursework with creativity, all while carrying herself with grace. She approaches each opportunity with curiosity and poise, making her a true scholar and an inspiration to those around her. Natalia is incredibly industrious and always committed to her work. Congratulations, Natalia. All right. Next is Erica. Erica came to Saddle Brook High School freshman year. From the day she started, she became involved with the school community. Erica works hard and always seeks out a challenge. Her kind and caring spirit is infectious, and she embraces everything a Saddle Brook Falcon can be. Erica is very independent and took the college process on applying to many schools and receiving many offers. Erica has challenged herself in high school each year taking honors-level courses. She perseveres and always gives it her all. Erica cares, has a kind heart, and has grown into a mature young adult. We are excited to hear about all the good she will accomplish after graduation. Congratulations, Erica. Our last exemplary Falcon of the evening is Yalani. Yalani is an extremely valuable member of our band program at Saddle Brook High School. She is a, ooh, hold, hold, sorry. I'm going to start over and not touch anything. Yalani is an extremely valuable member of our band program at Saddle Brook High School. She is a talented and dedicated musician who has, on top of already playing the flute in the concert band and bass drum in the marching band, recently taken on the task of learning a new instrument, the oboe. Oboe is an especially difficult instrument to learn because of the coordination required to produce a good sound on the double reed. Through her persistent and thoughtful approach to the instrument, she is navigating it with grace. She is even currently preparing an audition on the instrument to win a scholarship for private oboe lessons. She has been consistently carrying out her responsibilities as one of the band's librarians. As librarian, she distributes music out to students in rehearsal, collects music after concerts, and then sorts all the parts into score order before filing them away in the correct spot in the band library. I'm pretty sure I can't do that. This requires skilled communication with the members of the band to ensure all parts are returned in a timely manner and attention to detail to ensure everything is properly filed. This is the first year I've worked with Yalani, but she has already established herself as a hard worker and an insightful student. She has a friendly disposition, an excellent sense of humor, and always comes to class prepared to work and do her best. Yalani was always wise above her years. She came to class prepared every day and took her academics seriously. She never shied away from a challenge and would work with her peers in a respectful manner. I remember clearly that Yalani spoke about becoming an astronaut someday, and if anyone has the drive and determination, it is Yalani. Yalani has a bright future in front of her. Congratulations, Yalani. Okay. At this time, I'm going to invite the members of our VFW. I will let you introduce yourselves, and that way you can present your awards.
Don't be nervous.
Good evening, everybody. We're very honored to be here tonight from VFW Post 3484 here in Saddle Brook to present the awards for the Voice of Democracy. It's an amazing program. I'm very fortunate to be the chairman of that committee. We have, we had nine entries for Voice of Democracy, none for Patriots Pen, unfortunately. Nobody can hear me? Sorry. Okay, here we go. So we have a second-place winner here, which is Eduardo Tovar, and we want to present him with that award. So if he would come up, please. Eduardo, though, thank you so much. We really appreciate your entry, and it was an amazing essay that you wrote.
Thank you.
We thank you so much. Very patriotic. And Jay Waymuller will give the award for the third place.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jay Waymuller. I'm the senior vice over at the VFW Post 3484. And third place, we have Mr. Sean McCauley.
What a great essay.
Thank you.
You got it. These are amazing young men. We're really proud of them.
If you could stay for a picture?
Absolutely.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to transition to our mid-year update. I'm going to invite the board members to transition to the chairs. If you sneak out, I will not be insulted if you want to stay and be honored. And thank you to our VFW members for their service and for presenting the awards. All right. So I'm here to present the district and board goals and mid-year update, and we adopted our motto this school year, "Soaring Together, United We Learn." So you'll see it on a lot of our forms that we're sharing out. Starting with the district goals. District goal number one was boosting attendance. I'm sure everyone in the district knows. I've been sending out plenty of emails about attendance. I've been tracking it. This is what we're doing as a district to combat our chronic, to improve our chronic absenteeism rate. So we began the school year with reviewing all the absences from last year. Anyone that had excessive absences last school year received an email from me. Each building has a school attendance team. They monitor the attendance. They meet with the parents. In elementary, anyone that's tardy needs to go into the school building and sign their child in late. After five tardies, it does turn into an absence per our board policy. And our principals are meeting with families. So after a certain number of absences, they invite the families in. It's mandatory. They sign an attendance contract, and they work together with the family. And we actually have seen lots of improvement already. We're also focusing on fostering relationships, communicating, verifying that our students reside in the town of Saddle Brook. I'm sure everybody knows that we are emailing families to request the four mandated proofs of residency. We are also working with NJ4S. NJ4S is a nonprofit organization. They actually, they started at our high school. They come twice a week, I believe, for maybe six weeks. Don't quote me on that. But during lunch period, and we identified high school students, we started with the high school, that have a high number of absences, and they go through this program. NJ4S runs it. They get them pizza lunch, and they talk to the students about the importance of attendance at school. And they work with them and their families to develop ways to improve their attendance. It's been a success. We're on our second round of it, and I'm happy to say that the students are definitely coming to school now. So it's been a great thing. And we also work with Department of Truancy. So we've been in touch with them. After 10 absences, we do call the Department of Truancy. We let them know, and then we follow up with them. So really working hard because you have to be in school in order to learn. If we're going to improve our test scores, we need our students to be here. Our goal number two is elevating our academic achievement. So what have we done for here? Well, each school does have a school data team. Now, this is on top of, well, there's, oh, gosh, there's so many different committees in our schools right now because of the Teacher Climate and Culture Grant that we were, that we received. But each school data team, they meet regularly. They actually look at the data. They look at student scores. They look at, in kindergarten, they have the DIBELS assessment. They have the AMPLIFY assessments. They have the math assessments. They have Lincoln. They look at all that information to identify students that are in need. They take that information, they develop a plan, they communicate it with the homeroom teacher, with the classroom teacher. There is follow-up. I actually, I see Mrs. Nastos here. She's part of the district data team at Smith School, and I'm so sure she can even speak better to this than I am. There are, every, the ML students are multilingual learners. The state changed it from English language learners to multilingual. Every single one of our multilingual students has an individual student learning profile that has been shared with their teachers. That way, their teachers are aware of where they tested, what they're able to do, and can give them the right level of challenge. Those data teams are monitoring data throughout the school year. As I said, they're meeting at a minimum monthly, and they are working together. So NJTSS, New Jersey Tiered System of Supports, that's what we're working with as a district. So every student starts at the bottom level, not the bottom level, it's like a pyramid. So every student starts at the bottom where that's the instruction that every single student receives. If they need more support, they go in the middle of the triangle, and the ones that need the most intensive support are on the top of the triangle. And that's how we determine who gets basic skills, who gets extra reading instruction, and things like that. There'll be more on that as I go through the strategic planning. And district goal number three was safety and security. All buildings now have a vested, thanks to our referendum, every single building has a vestibule area. We are currently updating our security cameras. Oh, no, we did already update our security cameras with AI utilization, and now we're adding to that with our COPS grant. So we did receive the COPS grant, where we're adding door access controls, intercom systems, and guest management systems. The guest management system will be when every single guest needs to sign in on the iPad. They do a quick background check. You have to show your ID, and then you're able to enter the building. We do have a new threat assessment screening tool that we use in the district, and I'll be sharing the referendum updates in a little bit. And the threat assessment team, I need to schedule a meeting with them, but we have a good group of staff members on that team, and we talk about the risks across the district. All right. These are the Board of Education goals. We have our Board of Ed president, Vicki Torbic. Nope. We have our Board of Ed vice president, Haley Traverso, who's going to share a little bit about these. We can do it together if you want to come up here. So board goal number one is engaging in these NJSBA workshops. So I'll let you two speak a little bit about that.
Okay. So we are in the process of putting on our calendar as a board some workshops for us to learn more about being a board and what it is that we need to do for you. So we're in the process of putting those on our calendar now, and these are some of the topics that we are looking at for those workshops. Oh, yeah. We actually had the highest number of board members attend the school board conference this year in Atlantic City also. So hopefully, we can keep that up. Yeah, a lot of these will happen there, too. So which one's this one? Oh, okay. So this one we finished. Our goal two was to come to an agreement with our custodial maintenance staff, so that has been done and signed. You want me to do it? I'm just making sure she didn't want to talk. Okay, so, community updates, okay. So we have been continuing to do this at each board meeting, talking about different community updates, really. Mrs. Violetti kind of keeps you guys informed on all of this for us. And Ray, yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Karate. So this is part of what we do each board meeting, so we'll continue to do that and try to keep you guys as informed as we can as to what's going on.
Sure you didn't want to talk? Appreciate it. Great job. And I'll be sharing more about the referendum and the strategic plan. Okay. Strategic plan. Goal number one was community involvement and communication. So since the start of the strategic plan, we have implemented the district app, updated our website. We're actually updating it again because Final Site was purchased, but without a steady tech person at the moment, we decided to halt it until that person starts. But the website will be updated. Social media, we have more of a social media presence. Parent groups are very active. We have ESL Family Events, English as a Second Language, for our students, for our multilingual learners. Mrs. DeBones has been spearheading that and hosting these family events throughout the school year. Each of our principals has weekly communication with parents. It was one of the reasons why we sent out that communication survey. Middle school and high communication survey. Middle school and high school counseling started doing a monthly newsletter. That's been a big improvement to that, to our middle school, high school, and our parent partnership nights that we've been hosting three times a school year. Our second goal is facilities. Next up is the referendum update. So I will, we will be talking about that. But we've been working on plenty of other projects across the district, integrating technology, updating our safety and security plans. We did the bathroom on the second floor. That was part of the referendum, actually. Air conditioning, every single main gym in every single school building does now have air conditioning in it. And we've been updating windows along the way as well. And I feel like there's so many more things. But we'll go to goal number three, culture and climate, social emotional learning. SEL is social emotional learning. We've been very strong in this area over the years. We have at our pre-K to six buildings, we have bright celebrations. They integrate children's literature with SEL competencies. And each month, a grade level will host, and they will share what they learned from reading that literature. And they do a presentation to students in the building. We also have each, we're fortunate, we've, and since I've been in Saddle Brook, we've had a full-time counselor in each building. And they do a lot of groups with our students. We have district-wide SEL days. We have mental health. We have a tier-two counselor. And we work closely with NJ4S. That's that organization that's coming on Parent Partnership Night to discuss, do a workshop on stress. Students in grade 10, we've been training every single year our grade 10 students in mental health, teen mental health, first aid training. And it's for our students to understand what to do, shall appear, express to them that they're having these feelings. So we have maybe four or five of our own staff members that are trained to teach this course. And we thank them because it's such an important program that we have in our district. And then we always do staff and climate surveys at our high school. Enhancing student achievement, so curriculum revisions. I will say, we had CUSAC last year. And the one, one thing that was said over and over again was that our district curriculum is a model for other districts. So they actually will call up Mrs. Debonus. And they will ask if other districts can look at our curriculum documents. So that's kudos to Mrs. Debonus for doing a fabulous job with that. Our professional development that we've had, Conquer Math, we continue with that every year. We receive positive feedback from our teachers on this. It's a lot of hands-on learning and relating math instruction to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We've had Reading League. That's our science of reading. Science of reading goes hand in hand with AMPLIFY. Right now, we started out with K to two. This year, we have AMPLIFY K to three. And it integrates a lot of social studies and science with literature as well. We've had KICRA Learning. They do tech PDs. So that our teachers meet with them to learn how to integrate tech best into their curriculum. And this year, they're actually, our teachers are getting to choose if they want to learn more about artificial intelligence and the latest technology updates or tools that are out there. Data analysis is a big one. We've looked at the evidence statements from the state tests last year. Our teachers are analyzing them, see where our students performed well last year, see where they need to improve. And they're learning what content area to focus on this school year. We're really focusing on improving our student achievement. So you know, everyone always says about, you know, you don't want to teach to the test. Our test right now, the state, the state assessment, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, is based on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Our curriculum is based on the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. So if we are teaching our curriculum, we are teaching to the test. The test has changed. It's evolved over the years. So it really is a true assessment as to what we're teaching in our classrooms. So we've been really focusing, our teachers have been really focusing on ways to incorporate test preparation into their lessons. So we're really practicing, not completing practice tests all the time, but we're really focusing on those skills that are on the assessment and making sure our students are familiar with them. We do have them practice taking the test as well, so that that way they are familiar with the tools that are on the assessment. Let's see, we purchased some teaching materials that are in alignment with the assessment as well. And our media specialists are working with our students on typing programs because the test is an online test. So our younger students are working on typing skills with our media specialists. We also have basic skills across the district in reading and ELA. And again, it's a lot of data collection, a lot of really analyzing the student performance and determining what they need and how best to target the instruction. Seal of Biloteracy, that was mentioned, actually, that we just completed it. I just wanted to put up the facts that we have. So when Mrs. Debonus first started, because she brought this to our district, we had 13 students that had their seal of Biloteracy seal on their diploma. The following year, we had 14. This year, we had 26 students that participated in the Seal of Biloteracy assessment. We're waiting on five results. So we had, so we had 31 students participate. 26 have already passed. Those are the languages, Spanish, Polish, and Arabic are the most popular here. But we have those other Punjabi, Russian, Hebrew, Latin, and French as well. And what it is, if you're proficient in another language other than English, you take the assessment. And on your high school diploma, you have a seal of Biloteracy. We also have worked, or I say we, and I mean our teachers, have worked in their teams to create common assessments. They're making sure that they're working together. So even today, Mrs. Debonus hosted elementary team meetings throughout the day-to-day for about an hour each. And they just shared ideas. Here's what's working in my classroom. Here's, I find, you know, I find great success with this. And they're also, they look at the student data, and then they share ideas as to what's working in their classroom. So that's been an ongoing thing throughout the school year. Test prep is built into the schedule. Our teachers are actually planning when to complete test prep activities with their class. So that way, they're marking it down. And we know that our students are having that practice throughout the school year. Our Option Two program has grown tremendously over the last couple of years. Mrs. Debonus has really worked hard to establish partnerships with local businesses to provide opportunities for our students. We also added career-focused courses, online courses as an option for our students, for anyone interested in trade programs. And then we have alternative physical education. If you participate in a varsity sport, you may opt out of PE for that semester if you're in good standing. College experience is going, taking a college course. Most of the time, it's at Bergen Community College. And work-based learning is you earn five credits to go off campus and you get to work. You have to complete assessments for Mrs. Debonus. It is a program, you do have to complete tasks. But it is an option. It's an option, too. Our next goal is personalized learning. I mentioned earlier that we've, this past year, we sent many of our teachers, our primary-level teachers, to morphology training with the Institute of Multisensory Education. And we really want to equip our youngest teachers, our teachers of the youngest grades, with those multisensory instructional tools. So that way, they can really have a, give our students a firm, a really strong foundation in phonics. We have an addition of elective courses at the high school level each year. And this year, we're having, our teachers are going to be creating short videos to highlight each course. So that way, students understand more about what the elective is. So in years past, we've had them all in the auditorium. And the teachers will go through the course that they're teaching, the elective that they're teaching. But it takes hours, and eventually, you lose the interest of the high school students. So this year, we're trying something new, where the teachers are going to create a short video about their elective, so the students can watch it and really understand what class they're signing up for. And then we have, oh, those are the data points that our team, that our data teams look at, DIBELS, LINKET, the NJSLA, NJGPA. And they really, you asked if they looked at data. That's really what they do. If you go into their data rooms, there are charts all around. And they're tracking data from year to year. We continue with personalized learning. We started a grade-seven seminar for our seventh grade students that are starting middle school. It's to help them with the transition to middle school, those executive functioning skills, technology integration, social emotional, things that are specific to seventh graders' needs as they start in a new school building. And then our Option Two program that I spoke about earlier. Okay, last one is the referendum update. There's pictures on this one. So it's a little bit more thrilling. All right, this is a list of all the projects. Starting at the middle school, high school, our bathrooms have been completed, ceiling and lighting completed. The roof is happening now and over the summer. We started phase one of the middle school, high school. We created the crosswalk in the middle of the street. We have the path. We, and not all of this is part of the referendum, I'm not sure. But we had the path going up the sidewalk, and then going cross over to the front doors of the middle school, high school. Then we have a middle school path going from the front doors to the middle school door. We updated the middle school right in front, the path right in front of the door. Our security vestibule here is completed. Windows are going on right now. They're actually really neat. They're beautiful. And they're blue on the outside, which is wonderful. And our turf field and lights is in progress. You'll see the lights are up. The field is ready. And the turf field is due to be delivered in probably about a week. And then it will take several weeks to install. So these are some pictures. You'll see the first two on the left are the bathrooms, student bathrooms upstairs here in this building. And then to the right is what the finished product looked like. To the left, remember, our middle school, high school used to have four doors. And then to the right, you'll see it now has three. And there's a security office at our middle school, high school that monitors the door and the security cameras. And then you'll also, if you haven't noticed, when you come in, there's the S and the B on the floors. We did that. And really trying to make it bright and cheery and full of falcon spirit. There's the picture of the tree, and then without the tree. Beautiful. Oh, and we are going to continue working on the front of the middle school, high school. So we are going to be meeting with the architects shortly to talk about design and awning, extra flowers or shrubbery, something to kind of make it a little bit prettier on the eyes. That's our middle school path to the middle school door. So the left is the path, and the right is right in front of the middle school door. There was some raised concrete. There's some broken up concrete. So while we had the concrete person here, we had him fix it up as well. To the left are the ceiling and lights before. And to the right are the ceiling and lights after, here at the middle school, high school. And even just the design, it gives it more of like an elongated look, having the lights faced that way. Washington School, you know, we renovated the whole second floor, put in an elevator. So I will show you. So this is what the second floor looked like before we renovated it. It was, we had some child study team members up there in storage. And this is what it looks like now. It's preschool classrooms. And each classroom does have a bathroom inside of it. You'll see there's a new child study team office. And then that's the waiting area for the child study team. That door leads to the elevator. And that's the new vestibule area at Washington School. So that way, they also have a secure vestibule area. To the left is they're creating the elevator shaft. To the right is the elevator. And then they also updated the electricity because of all the new items in the building. And we are going to continue working at Washington School, updating the concrete in front of the building, and a couple other little projects as well. At Smith School, we had the ceiling and lights completed. Those are the pictures. The two on the left are before pictures. And the one on the right is an after picture. And the roof is in progress. At Franklin School, the same thing, ceiling and lights were completed. You'll see the two on the left. And then on the right, it's completed. And the roof and the floors are going to happen, most likely, in the summer of 2025. Long Memorial School, that's the vestibule area before. They closed up the door to the nurse's office. And they created a window and a box. So to the right are the completed pictures. And to the left is what it looked like as they sealed up the door. But now Long School has a secure vestibule area as well. Coolidge School, it's in progress. It's not completed yet. This is what it looked like before. And all the way to the right, I know it's dark, but the lights weren't on. But those are the pictures. That's what it looks like, pretty much right now. It's painted. And it's going to be the Board of Ed offices. And then downstairs is going to be a conference room. That is all you have from me. All right. So we are going to transition back over. Does that move any questions? Yes? Yes. Yep. You're welcome. Yes? No. Washington inside, I believe, Mr. Karati, the inside of it is done. We are. Yes, we're replacing windows. And we're going to do the ceiling and lighting on both floors because it is a little dark in the hallways. Any other questions? Mr. Karati, did I miss anything? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Violetti, for all that information. Mr. Karati, business administrator's report?
So Ms. Violetti covered a lot of the projects and referendum updates. So at the six o'clock meeting, we had our auditor here give us presentation on the audit report. I'm lucky to report that I had no other comments, or the district had no other comments. But I just want to tell you that there's a lot that goes into this. It is a financial report on all financial transactions of the district. It's nothing to a curriculum like Mrs. Violetti spoke with the county coming in and doing our CUSAC review. This is all financial. And it covers a lot of areas in the district. Obviously, payroll and benefits is a big number of our $45 million budget. So we have Ms. Perkovic in payroll, does a great job there. Ms. Tricia Calderon paying all our bills that the board members see and sign the vouchers. And my assistant, Naomi Feliciano, handles all contracts, the application for state school aid, and many other things that the auditors review, the minutes, that keeps everything up to date. The rest of the central office, you know, does personnel contracts, things that they look at. The schools, the principals assistants handle, sorry, my mic, handles the student activity accounts. Again, there's financial transactions, so they get reviewed. There's a lot, food service, all the transactions there with Pomptonian. So everybody does a great job. Student account, students, we have to submit an application for state school aid that gets reviewed because tied to that is about $3 million. And they review that students are enrolled in our district on a certain date, and that's statewide. Transportation, same thing. The students are busing, meet state requirements, and again, enrolled in the district on a certain date statewide. Staff travel, that's on like the agenda tonight. They review staff travel, the workshops attending, make sure we're conforming to all the regulations. And the audit report and the auditor's management report, which is a smaller report that kind of goes through the different areas a little bit better than the, the large report is the balance sheet and revenues and notes to financial statements. And if you have any trouble sleeping at night, it is on the website. Just read it for a couple pages. And I'm sure it'll put you to sleep, unless you're really interested in financial transactions. So it will be on the website. The board members have electronically. Again, I have a couple copies in my office and behind me, if you want to take it home and read it. But if there's no questions on that, again, I thank everybody. And we had a great audit. And we're looking for, hopefully, another great year.
Thank you, Mr. Karati, and your staff for all the work they put into that. Okay. Does anyone wish to speak on agenda items and policies only? Anyone? Okay. Okay, so for board action items, we have B2425.27 through B2425.30.
Second?
I shared during the caucus part, but I will, I don't believe we were on camera. So .30 is a revised calendar for this school year because the state changed primary days. The primary day was June 3. And we had off that day because there's voting in our schools. But the state changed it to June 10. So the proposed is to now close June 10 and be open on June 3.
And Michael seconded it. Did you hear that? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, roll call, please. Take your time.
Ms. Zainella?
Yes.
Ms. Laurentino?
I'm going to vote yes to all, but in B2425.27, I'll abstain from number three.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Trocchamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocelllo?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Education and curriculum?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following item, E2425.40, field trip request.
Second.
Michael seconded. Any questions?
I'll highlight some of the field trips. We are interested, 11th graders will be able to take a trip to Universal Technical Institute, UTI, for those interested in the trade school. Our grade 12 senior banquet is at the Brownstone. Service Learning Club here at the middle school, high school, they've been doing a lot. They are visiting our elementary schools to do kindness lessons. Our grade 12 students, our senior students that apply to Bergen Community College, they will be going to Bergen Community College with our counselors. They receive a tour of the campus. They meet their advisor and they actually create their schedule for the fall. And there's some trips on here for our middle school, high school clubs. I will say that our construction, our students in our construction class are joining our outdoors club for one of their trips to Jersey City Trail, where they will be looking at the architecture. And our Polish club here is going to Polish Heritage Night at the Prudential Center. I believe that's the Devils, Mr. Crotty? Prudential?
Yes.
Yes. And our high school musical will go to our elementary buildings to preview our musical, which is Once Upon a Mattress. And those tickets will be going on sale in probably about a week, I believe. And that's it.
Any other questions?
Oh, and this year, our preschool four-year-old students will be going to Franklin School to participate in the spring musical, not participate in the spring musical, in the, they'll be in the audience. I'm missing the word. It's getting late.
They'll be attending the preview.
Yes, yes. They'll be invited, our preschool students.
Does anybody else have any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ionello?
Yes.
Ms. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli? Mr. Ocelllo?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Budget and finance, Ms. Traverso?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items, BF2425.62 through BF2425.73.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to highlight .73. Mr. Crotty and myself, we worked on this grant with the local, for NJDCA Local Recreation Improvement. And what we submitted the grant in the hopes of obtaining funds to remodel our playgrounds at our three K to six buildings. So what we're looking to do is have that rubber matting floor on the floor of the playgrounds and new apparatus at each of our K to six buildings. So when we look at our playgrounds, they are aging. When I looked at the year, I believe Franklin School is 1999. And even though that doesn't feel like that long ago, it really is that long ago. So we are hoping that we'd be able to receive some funds through this grant in order to start remodeling those playgrounds.
Very cool.
Yeah, and the estimate is double that. You know, we've got our local funds in the budget that we'll have to raise in the 25, 26 budget. And this is, you know, we're trying to get the grant monies for, you know, the half of it. The application had a dollar amount in there, about $100,000. We decided to add a little more to it. Maybe we'll get lucky.
Dream big, yeah.
Through the chair, I have a question on that.
Sure.
So now you applied for this grant. Can you apply for this grant next year as well? Can you do this every year?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. I know that they may not grant it to you either, but I just wondered if you could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ionello?
Yes to all, but in BF2425.62, I'm going to abstain from check numbers 227 and 583. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Laurentino?
I'll vote yes to all, but under BF2425.62, I'll abstain from check 312 and 658.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes to all, except for BF2425.62, I'm going to abstain from check number 66503.
Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocelllo?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes to all, but in BF2425.62, I'm going to abstain from check number 66509.
Okay. Facilities and operations?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make the motion to approve the following item, F2425.7, approval of school facility views.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Ionello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli? Mr. Ocelllo?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'll do policy. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items,
Second.
Michael seconded.
These are all second readings that we reviewed last month.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ionello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes.
Ms. Borelli? Mr. Ocelllo?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
Okay. So no negotiations, so personnel?
Before you make the recommendation, we just have in 2425.50, the number three, the, we're going to go with ID number 5768, actions termination and effective date is 3/6/25.
At the recommendation of superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items,
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Point 50, we have a music teacher at Franklin Elementary School that has resigned and one of our district computer technicians has also resigned. And then number three is what Mr. Crotty just added. Okay. Point 51 are our leaves of absences. We have three that are being revised due to either corrupted paperwork or date changes. And then we have four new ones, three maternity leaves and one medical leave. Point 52 are our appointments. So number one, we have a power professional who never started for us. So we're rescinding that hire. Number two, we're rescinding her as a part-time bus driver custodian. And then number three, you'll see we're hiring her as a bus driver for the district. So she's just changing a little bit. Number four, we hired him in the past as part-time evening custodian. We're rescinding that. And number five, he's now going to be a full-time evening custodian. Number six is another evening custodian. Number seven, we're revising, he was an evening custodian. And number eight, he's now going to be a bus driver slash custodian. Point 53, we have our stipends. We have our head nurse. It's a revision for number one because she is out on maternity leave. So number two, we'll get the stipend for the remainder of the school year. Then we have our lacrosse coaches for both boys and girls. We have our softball coaches. We have our baseball coaches. We have our track and field coaches, our weight room coordinator, our head football coach, our ESY coordinator, that's our summer program extended school year. And then you'll see we have all data teams, all of that. Every single data team one is through our teacher climate and culture grant that the district received. And then 42, 43, and 44 are the stipends that go along with those positions. Point 54 is longevity. Point 55 are pit orchestra musicians for our spring musical.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ionello?
Yes to all, but in P2425.53, I'm going to abstain from numbers three through 16. Yes to everything else.
Okay, Mr. Laurentino?
Yes to all.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes to all, but I will abstain from 2425.53, number 16.
Ms. Raccamondo?
Yes to all, except for 2425.53, number 16.
Is that a no? Are you abstaining?
No.
It's a no?
Yeah, that's real clear. Ms. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocelllo?
Yes.
Ms. Torvik?
Yes.
So I do not have enough votes for 53, number 16, so it does not pass. We need five votes. Number 2425.53, number 16, does not pass because it didn't get five votes.
Okay.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that. Oh, yes. I didn't know that. Oh, because we have two people left.
Okay. Committee reports? Anyone? You want to do budget? She did it before, right? Yeah. Haley, you already did budget, right? You can repeat it just in case somebody's here and wasn't there.
As far as the budget committee goes, we did start meeting actually this evening and are looking ahead towards next year's budget. We will be meeting again on the 20th, I believe, February 20th.
Yes.
Very simple.
Any liaison reports? I don't have one here.
I have Washington School.
Okay.
I'm going to go.
Go right ahead.
All right. All right. Again, the fashion show, very popular. On February 5th, Washington School held their annual fashion show. Wonderful way for students to wrap up their clothing unit using the creative curriculum. It was a success and I encourage you to check out their Instagram for probably the most adorable photos you've ever seen. Tomorrow, February 13th, is Pay a Dollar to Wear Your Pyjamas. So get your singles out for that. February 25th, the first floor classrooms will be going on a field trip to Imagine That. And then the next day on the 26th, the second grade classrooms will be going to Imagine That also. Movie night is happening again. They're still working to solidify details. And then they want to highlight their tricky tray as it will be the school's biggest fundraiser. It's on March 12th, which is also my birthday, at 6:30 at the Spotted Canvas. And it's open to the public. They already have some great donations and there will be a 50/50 raffle. And that's all I have from Washington.
Anyone else?
I have two. I have middle school, high school, and Franklin for Ms. Adarelli. It says the PTO celebrated the crossing guards today and thanked them for all their amazing hard work. Mr. Gary, Mr. Nick, Mr. Lou are in, they are vital and amazing parts of the middle school and high school community. And as far as Franklin, last night, the Franklin PTO had their monthly meeting. They are working on fundraisers including Candygrams and heart-shaped pizza kits for Valentine's Day. They are also conducting their annual Gertrude Hawk chocolate as sixth grade fundraiser. And future events discussed included Family Fun Night at Humdinger's in Paramus on March 24th. They also discussed the possibility of a family dance for May and a tricky tray for November. I think that's it. And then I have mine for Smith. I'm sorry, I got to grab it out of here. Okay. Smith School. Students received a popcorn party to celebrate the 100th day of school today. The sixth grade class will distribute Valentine lollipop grams to each student for Valentine's Day. Donations collected will support sixth grade end of the year activities. The sixth grade class also hosted their annual duct tape the teacher event and would like to thank Ms. Laurentino and Ms. Murphy for being such good sports and getting taped to the wall. Smith students will be selling chocolate from Gertrude Hawk. Booklets will home soon. And they are hosting their annual VP dance on Wednesday, March 26th at the Fiesta. Tickets are on sale now and their next PTO meeting is February 18th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Thank you.
Okay. Long School. Tomorrow night, let's pray that the weather holds out for them, is their annual special guy, special person, little lady dance at the Biadios. There's a big save the date for May 17th of 2025. Our color run is coming back. It's been many years. They are seeking sponsors for that. So if anybody is interested in sponsoring, please go to the PTO, Long School PTO website and hit the color run section. And while you're doing that, slide on over to the Spirit Sale tab and look at their newest items for this year. As a friendly reminder, LMS PTO members can join their Facebook page. All LMS families and staff are encouraged to visit their website, which is kept up to date with all the upcoming events, fundraisers, and meetings. Their next meeting will be March 11th at the Long School Cafeteria.
Thank you.
I'll do township liaison because I believe Ms. Adarelli was going to do that one. We met with the Township Liaison Committee, with the mayor and town council and Mr. Ludico. And we just spoke about different projects that involve the school and the town together. I want to thank them for their support and their cooperation with us. They're always extremely willing to work with us. One of the things I did forget to mention was that you may have seen in front of the high school, they were digging holes, they were drilling holes in the street. We, our pedestrian crossing signs that we ordered did come and they will be being installed hopefully within a couple days. They're the solar powered ones with the flashing lights. So we'll have two of them installed in front of the high school at that main crosswalk.
Thank you. Okay. That's all our reports. Correspondents? None? All business?
All business.
Mr. Laurentino?
Just put another plug out there that on March 4th, we're having the meeting here at the Media Center to discuss if we should have a Saddle Brook High School Athletic Call of Fame. And just to emphasize, the meeting is determined whether we have the support needed to move forward. I did have a great meeting this week with the superintendent and the athletic director. We're doing a phenomenal job with this. But again, if you're interested, please come out and give us some support because without the support, this project cannot move forward.
Thank you. Any new business?
Through the chair?
Sure.
I just wanted to let the board know, so kind of like old and new business. I had mentioned at our last board meeting that I had come in with my colleagues to visit our school district and to see how Amplify is being used and how they had devised a plan to improve and work with the students with the literacy. So it's been an ongoing challenge in our school, but I've been working with Mrs. DeBonis and she has answered all of my questions. She has helped me out tremendously. So I just wanted to let the board know what a great job she's doing. And thank you to Mrs. Violetti for all the help and Mrs. DeBonis that she is providing our guidance for our district.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll also share that we continue to have districts coming to our schools to observe and speak with our teachers and administration about the Amplify program because it's been such a success so far this school year.
Through the chair, just real quick. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the morning crew over there at Long School. Ms. Fontana, Mrs. Manfield, Officer Joe. Usually Mrs. DeLuca and some staff are always out there on the front to welcome students and to make sure everyone's getting in safely. Rain, sleet, snow, shine, 10 degrees, 90 degrees, doesn't really matter. They're always out there with a smile welcoming the students. And it's just really nice to see sort of, you know, every morning them seeing, the students seeing a familiar face, even though it's February. Some still look a little apprehensive going in, especially some of the younger students. So I think it's just really great. I'm lucky enough to drop my daughter off every morning and next year my son, when he goes to kindergarten. And it's just a really warm and welcoming environment to bring them to. So just a shout out to everyone over there at Long School. They're doing a great job.
Very nice. Anybody else?
Through the chair.
Sure.
Last Friday, we were able to grant, I hate to put it, someone's last wish to see their child graduate. So I want to thank Ms. Violetti, Ms. Sassone, Mr. Ionello, Mr. Maish, Mr. Ocelllo, the Saddle Brook Police Department, the Saddle Brook Fire Department, the Bergen County Sheriff's Department, the Prosecutor the Bergen County Sheriff's Department, the prosecutor's office, the teachers who showed up, the teachers who were involved, the students, to see her son Spencer be able to graduate. So thank you to all you guys for making that happen. And God bless the Saloma family, and I hope everything works in their favor.
Thank you. Okay. Now I have to close. All right.
Sorry to bring you down.
Yes. Okay. Is there anyone that would, wanted to speak tonight before I read my paragraph? No one?
Yes.
I don't want to read the big paragraph. Okay. That being said, then I guess we will close the meeting. So can I have a motion to close the, thank you? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.